Wheat Ridge Channel 8, keeping you informed on events in your community.
Ken Breitman is absent. Alan Buckman.
Present.
Mark Dietrich.
Present.
John Dwyer.
Here.
Dick Matthews.
Here.
Scott Ohm.
Here.
George Pond. And Steve Tims is absent this evening.
Next item on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Is there a motion to approve the order of the agenda?
I move to approve the order of the agenda. I second the motion.
It's been moved and seconded. Please pull the commission.
And that motion passes unanimously?
Is there a motion for approval of the minutes as changed by the email that we got?
Yes, I have a change to the minutes. It would be the final development plan for the property zone planned industrial, let's It should read case number WZ-10-0-8 and MS-10-0-4. You should correctly read that it was moved by Commissioner Dwyer and seconded by Commissioner Pond to recommend approval of case numbers WZ-10-0-8 and MS-10-0-4. A request for approval of a final development plan and a three lot re-subdivision for property zone planned industrial development located at 5130 Parfit Street for the following reasons.
Okay.
Yeah, that's probably enough. Yeah, yeah. Is there a second of the approval of the corrected minutes?
I second.
It's been moved and seconded. Please pull the commission.
Can that motion passes with Commissioner Buckman abstaining?
Now is the time for the public forum, and that's for members of the public to speak on any item that is not on the agenda. If you're speaking on an item that is on the agenda, the time to speak is during that agenda item or that public hearing. You're on the agenda?
Not on the agenda. I'm here with both ears wide open.
Okay. Okay. It doesn't seem to be any other members of the public present, so we can start right out with the public hearings. I hereby open the public hearing for case number ZOA-09-06 and ordinance amending Chapter 26 concerning medical marijuana dispensaries and ask for a staff report.
I do have a brief PowerPoint presentation to go over the ordinance. This is the proposed, as we refer to it, the medical marijuana ordinance. It is an ordinance that covers much more than just medical marijuana in the zoning code, but your purview this evening is reviewing its contents as it relates to the zoning code, Chapter 26 of the municipal code. What I want to do for, in terms of the presentation, is go through a little bit of a history of what the medical marijuana has looked like in Colorado, talk to you a little bit about how we've looked at medical marijuana over the past several years in the city of Wheat Ridge, and then obviously go through some of the highlights of the ordinance. So Amendment 20 to the Colorado Constitution was actually approved by the voters in 2000. Without going into legalese of what that contains, essentially what it did was it legalized the consumption of medical marijuana for certain specified debilitating medical conditions. It does require a doctor to verify that those medical conditions exist in order for patients to be able to obtain a registry card and legally obtain medical marijuana. It does also, did also create the concept of a primary caregiver, and those primary caregivers are allowed to cultivate and grow medical marijuana for a certain number of And I said this is a brief history, so I'm going to fast forward from 2000 to 2009. And we do that really because there, at least in my opinion, this issue kind of was under the radar for a number of years. What changed in 2009 is that the U.S. Attorney General announced a new approach in terms of, I'll call it a softer approach, in terms of enforcing federal laws which did not legalize marijuana in any form. So softening the enforcement of those in states where there had been laws or constitutional amendments that legalized medical marijuana, Colorado obviously being one of those. What that seemed to do is increase the level of commercial interests in potential, in this industry, if you will, and a lot of interest started to come about in terms of creating what we commonly refer to as medical marijuana dispensaries, so kind of a business model to this. At the same time, the Colorado Department of Public Health and Environment, who was the rulemaking agency at the state level who was charged with developing rules in this arena, changed the definition of primary caregiver so that a primary caregiver could be defined as someone who solely provided medical marijuana to a patient, and that was a significant change in the definition that again kind of supported this business model of there being these dispensary types of activities, which is really what we're regulating at this point. CD-PHE was in the process in that year of adopting a series of additional rules, and that process became very contentious. The legislators started to get involved, and they put that rulemaking process eventually on hold. And then as we get into 2010, the legislature really took this topic on with a series of different bills, one primary one that was ultimately adopted and signed by the governor that we'll talk a little bit more about now. So that, it was House Bill 10-1284, and again it was approved by the Colorado Legislature in 2010. It really conceived of three new concepts for medical marijuana establishments or businesses and created definitions for each of these. Medical marijuana centers, which would probably be more commonly known as the dispensaries, optional premises cultivation operations, a lot of words for the grow portion of this business, and then lastly, the medical marijuana infused products manufacturers, which is kind of another sidearm to this business where using medical marijuana to, you know, create brownies or, there's actually, you know, salves, balms, different ways to obtain the medical marijuana without smoking it. House Bill 102084 did a few other things, and I'm really going to give you the brief overview of this, but it changed the rulemaking agency to the Department of Revenue. The Department of Revenue is actually in the process still of adopting those rules. They've had draft rules available for review for, I think since September, and they've had some public hearings on that, and they're nearing the end of that process. By and large, we don't think those rules are really going to change a local municipality's regulatory approach. We'll certainly need to be aware of them and how they impact us, but we don't think it really impacts the content of the ordinance that's before you tonight. The House bill also created a municipal opt-out option. In other words, cities, local governments, cities, counties, and other local governments could choose to, by two ways, they could actually just say, "We don't care to have any of these medical marijuana related businesses in our community." One way to do that would be for a city council to just by majority vote choose to do that by ordinance. Another way would be for a city council to forward that question to their voters for a ballot question, and at this point, we've not gotten any direction from our city council that that's an avenue that we want to go down. It did also importantly authorize municipal moratoriums so that cities were legally allowed to put a moratorium in place to give us some time to figure out how exactly we want to regulate this and in compliance with the state law. A lot of the House bill is spent on operational requirements, whether it be security, lighting, the application procedures in terms of the ownership and criminal background checks, and it really drills down quite specifically on a number of those topics. And because of that, we don't feel a need in our ordinance to really deal with operational requirements at all, very important issues like, you know, lighting requirements, security requirements, that we actually in previous drafts of our local regulations had included, but at this point have totally eliminated those because we think the state does a good job of regulating that and enforcing that. It created a 1,000-foot separation requirement from any medical marijuana establishment to the nearest school, daycare, or substance abuse center. And in doing so, it allows cities to vary that standard and to reduce that standard if they see fit. In the draft ordinance, as you'll see, we've not chosen to vary that, we've chosen to mirror it, but the state did give you the ability to do that. It does require local governments to establish a licensing authority. There is also a state license requirement, and those two processes can really mesh together, but it does require that we create a local licensing authority, and it's really general in terms of what that might look like. It could be a formal board, it could be a new board, it could be an existing commission, or it can simply be a staff function. And we've opted in the ordinance to say, "We like the idea of keeping this really an administrative function," and it would be administered in our ordinance as through the Business and Sales Tax Licensing Division. So in Wheat Ridge, we do have two at this point in time dispensaries or medical marijuana centers as they'd be defined under the new state regs. The first one of those was approved in 2009. We've had as many as seven. I think five was the most that we had operating at any one time. Obviously, a number of those have gone out of business in the intervening couple of years. The reason that we had approved some was that we had initially, for a fairly brief period of time, when faced with some applications for these businesses through the business license process, we had classified them as most similar to a pharmacy in terms of a land use regulation. Pharmacies are allowed in most commercial districts, and in a nutshell, that's how those, up to seven dispensaries, were approved. As the issue seemed to take on more life and get more complicated, we decided that, you know, we really probably do need to take a harder look at this, which is the point in time that we recommended a council that they consider a moratorium to give us time to better analyze this and come back with some appropriate regulations. The first moratorium was adopted September 14, 2009, and that's still in effect. It's been extended on two separate occasions, and the way it stands right now, it's in effect until the effective date of the Department of Revenue's rulemaking process. I would note that grow operations, the cultivation, has never been authorized. At the same time that we made the determination that pharmacies and medical marijuana dispensaries were similar uses, we also were faced with that question of, well, what about cultivation? And we didn't feel comfortable finding that the cultivation of marijuana was similar to some other use groups, so by doing that, we essentially said that it wasn't permitted. So we've never had any legal grow operations in the city. We have had a number of study sessions with city council, both over the last two years, back in 2009 and in 2010. Our most recent one was November 15 of last year, so just a couple months ago. In general, not to speak for council, but I think their approach has been to really not consider an all-right ban, but to consider some reasonable regulations that allow these types of business in a, you know, fairly limited number of locations where we can be confident that they're going to be compatible and not be a public safety concern. As I mentioned already, the ordinance, as it's proposed, creates the Tax and Licensing Division as our local licensing agency. It's also real clear that the Police Department and the Community Development Department have to be referred to, and they have to sign off on those applications as well to ensure some of these, you know, public safety issues in regards to background checks and the lighting requirements, security requirements, et cetera, being met, as well as, of course, the location as a permissible location, which would be more of a function of the Community Development Department. As I mentioned already, we are proposing to mirror the state separation requirements from schools, daycares, and treatment facilities, so that 1,000-foot separation requirement. We've also taken the approach in the ordinance at council's direction of adding this three-quarter mile separation between medical marijuana locations. This was really something that we took from an adjacent jurisdiction who had adopted that approach, Lakewood, who was one of the early communities to adopt ordinance and regulation on this topic, had taken that approach as a way to, you know, kind of allow a reasonable number of these locations, but not an oversaturation of the operations. The other, I guess, important thing to note in terms of a general summary of the ordinance is that we've adopted into the ordinance what we call a vertical integration model. And what that means is that if you do want to have a cultivation operation in the city, that optional premises license, you can only do that in association with a medical marijuana center, so that you'd be growing it, but then also selling it at the same location. And Dan could speak, Chief Brennan could speak better to this than I, but part of the concern there that we're trying to address is the transport issue and the lack of control and the public safety issues that arise in that instance. And then we get to the zoning code, which the zoning code changes are actually fairly limited in terms of your consideration this evening. There are a couple cross-references in the ordinance to the zoning code, and then there's one direct reference that I'll speak to in a moment. So the cross-reference, number one, is to home occupations, and essentially what we're doing there is we're saying that there still can be primary caregivers or patients that are in their home in a residential district cultivating marijuana, compliant with state law, importantly compliant with the Constitutional Amendment 20, which, you know, first and foremost established the rights of patients and primary caregivers. The only thing we're saying is that if you're doing that, we consider that to be a home occupation, and you need to comply with the home occupation regulations. One thing that does is it limits it to 25% of this total square footage of the House. It requires that the grow, the growing be completely done indoors. We think those are both two important requirements. There is also a cross-reference to the signage regulations that has the effect of saying if you want to use the word marijuana or cannabis in an exterior sign, that it has to be preceded by the word "medical," cannot be a standalone use of that word. And then lastly, the change to Chapter 26 that's of prime consideration tonight is where these uses will be allowed and which zoning districts. And we've recommended that they be allowed in two zoning districts in the proposed ordinance, the C1, commercial one, and our industrial zone districts. We did include a couple maps in the staff in the packet that you received that show you where those locations are, and then shows where the existing, it shows where two existing businesses are, one on 38th and Kipling 1 at Wasworth and roughly 42nd. And it also shows the location of a number of the daycare, schools, and substance abuse treatment centers to see, to create buffers and show you what areas would be excluded from having medical marijuana centers because of those existing schools, daycares, and treatment centers. So the second map of the two maps really shows what's left, you know, what is Zone C1 and industrial that isn't impacted by the existing two locations or one of those uses that are required to have the separation. So essentially, those are the properties that could in the future, through appropriate licensing, be authorized to have a medical marijuana establishment. And I've already mentioned it, but again, the scope of review tonight, as I'm sure the commission understands, is related to the Chapter 26 changes, and for this ordinance to move forward, a recommendation from the Planning Commission to city council is needed. And that's all I have. I'd be glad to answer questions or defer to other public comments.
Ken, thanks for your presentation. A few questions regarding the 1,000-foot buffer from schools, childcare, treatment Just so that we are being good neighbors, did we look at, did you and your staff look at that 1,000-foot buffer also in relation to schools, treatment facilities, and childcare facilities that exist just outside the city's borders in Lakewood and so forth?
Yeah, it's a great, that's a great question, and we've been looking into that more actually today. Excuse me, we haven't mapped that at this point. We don't have the same access to GIS information for the other jurisdictions as we do internally, of course, but I think there are resources for us to identify those locations. From a legal standpoint, we did review that issue with our city attorney's office today, and he believes that the ordinance as drafted would require that we look at those locations. So whether it be the three-quarter mile separation or the buffer from the schools and the daycare, so we'll need to go and find through whatever data sources we can, one of those being the state database for all these dispensaries or medical marijuana centers, and just find out where those are on our borders when we have an application that comes in that's within, you know, close enough proximity to another community that we need to do that. So we will be doing that as we move forward.
Okay. Yeah, I've got a couple more. Is that all right? Okay. Why the, why three-quarters of a mile radius around existing establishments? Why that particular distance?
Well, city council thought that that was a good way to control the total number of these locations. You know, we're chartering new territory to some extent on this, as I'm sure you're well aware. We had the example from Lakewood, and we borrowed from it frankly.
In terms of, I mean, if the goal is to have a limited but reasonable number of locations, why not just, why not just give a number, say, "Well, you know, we only want to have two," or "We only want to have five," or something like that?
That's another approach. It's actually an approach that we've used in regards to billboards in the city. We've set a cap of 16 billboards, and we currently have 16 billboards, but when there's a vacancy, we've only had one that I know of in the past maybe 15 years, but we did a lottery, and people basically submitted applications to get that one free license, one available license. That's certainly another approach.
Okay. I have some more questions, but I'll give some other people an opportunity.
Scott?
Is the three-quarter mile separation, is that as the crow flies?
I would have to reference the ordinance to be, give you a good answer, Commissioner Ohm. I don't know if you guys know off the top of your head. The 1,000-foot separation is not as the crow flies. That's certainly how we've mapped it so far.
And then the other, the other question I have is, will the proposed separation affect the two current establishments?
In terms of whether they would be allowed to continue?
In their, in their current location.
Right.
Or will they become legal non-conforming?
To the extent that they are within one of those 1,000-foot, you know, buffers from one of the identified uses, they'd become legally non-conforming. The House bill, as it was enacted, actually gives the city the ability to, and jump in here if I'm stating this incorrectly, Chris, but to actually make those illegal and require, you know, so they could potentially not be allowed to continue. We've not taken that approach in our ordinance thus far. I'm still searching for the three-quarter, have you guys looked at the three-quarter mile?
George?
Says radius.
I think I just have one or two. Can you, is there any other?
Yeah.
Is there anything else, any other definitions inside of Chapter 26 in regards to home occupation other than the 25, maximum 25% of the interior floor area of a residence and having to be inside? Is there anything else that's covered in that definition of home occupation?
The home occupation regulations have a number of different criteria for what you can and cannot do. I mean, there shall be no visible evidence of the activity, cannot change the residential character of the area, there's some limitation on signage, there's no outdoor storage allowed, there's some certain things related to parking that are in the home occupation. So there's a number of different things that would all apply to them. I just, in highlighting the 25%, I thought those were probably just the most germane.
So these home occupation regulations are specific to medical marijuana?
No, I'm sorry. They applied to all home occupations. Yep, they'll be treated just like any other.
And I'm not sure if you'll be able to answer this, I'm just curious if there's any understanding of the fluctuation of the dispensaries from that peak of five to seven down to two, if there's any anecdotal information as to why it went down?
No, I'd be speculating. Commissioner Ohm, I think absent any language to the contrary, that we would interpret that three-quarter mile to be a straight line radius around.
Okay, thanks. Thanks for your presentation, Ken. So you mentioned that initially you and the city in general were considering dispensaries basically the same as pharmacies, but that obviously has changed, and so I'd like you to maybe bring us up to speed on what it is that's caused the city not to think of them as pharmacies because that seems to me the most analogous use that they're in.
Right. I might, I think Chief Brennan might have some comments on this one. I think there are some additional impacts that we've identified beyond that associated with that of a pharmacy, which is the reason for the need for additional regulation, but my comrades across the way.
I'll do my best to try to answer that question. Pharmacies are regulated. They're not only regulated by the state, but they're also regulated by the federal government. Pharmacies distribute what we would commonly know as medicines, and those medicines have an accepted medical use that has been demonstrated through lots of medical studies specific to particular types of illnesses and diseases. It requires a prescription from a doctor, and a doctor generally, when he issues a prescription, looks at a patient's condition, does an evaluation based on his years of experience and medical history, and writes a prescription that essentially experience and medical history, and writes a prescription that essentially says, you need this particular product at this particular milligram, or whatever that dosage unit might be. Medical marijuana, on the other hand, simply requires a verification, which is a completely different standard in regards to a medical condition that a, you know, a patient may have, and there's a host of those, those conditions that were written into that initial constitutional amendment. The other issue and conflict that you have is the federal government regulates pharmacies and the drugs that are prescribed within that. The federal government does not recognize medical marijuana as a medical drug. It's a Schedule I substance, and the way Schedule I substances are described is generally is highly addictive, no known medical values. So, you know, until they either change the schedule of that or recognize marijuana as having a medical benefit, it'll remain in that sort of limbo status that we're in right now in regards to that. So that's, that's one of the primary reasons in regards to that. The only marijuana product right now that is, can be legally prescribed out of pharmacy is, and the name just escapes, Marinol, which is, you know, a pill form of cannabis, so.
So, and I guess now that you're in it too, either of you can answer the question. So how does that relate to restricting where dispensaries can operate as far as being, why did we come to the conclusion that they need to be restricted to C1 and industrial zones? Because I completely agree with your explanation, but that doesn't seem to me to have any bearing on restricting where they can operate.
Ken, can I step in here?
Sure.
Hi, Chris Price, I'm from Jerry Doll's office. One of the reasons that, another reason that we, that the recommendation was made to limit the zones was because of the vertical integration model that is proposed in the ordinance. And there was some concern about the industrial nature of cultivation operations. And so if a cultivation operation has to be contiguous with a retail outlet, and you allow a retail outlet in every zone in the city their pharmacy is located in, you're potentially bringing in a, an industrial type of use into those zones. So you would have to have both the optional premises cultivation operation and the medical marijuana center operation, they would both be operating in, say, I don't know exactly what the zones were, but say in a neighborhood commercial or something like that. And that's probably not a zone that you would want that type of activity in.
Thanks, yeah, that helps.
Alan, you want to work on your list?
Yeah, sure. Actually, to follow up on that, one of my questions was, you know, specific to those zones, you know, what, so that, that additional industrial use impact would, would explain why, why we're not looking at zoning inside, say, a mixed-use district, for example? Either mixed-use neighborhood or interstate? In terms of the vertical integration, what, you know, Ken, you mentioned transport from a cultivation facility to a retail operation, having some concerns with, in terms of transport, in terms of public safety issues. What are those concerns we're talking about?
Again, I'd maybe look at Chief Brennan again, but really, I mean, that was first and foremost, you know, what I believe to be the concerns is some of the, you know, the risks associated with that, with that transport activity and the lack of control of the substance that you have in that transport period.
So the lack of control, I mean, I can, I can come up with a lot of scenarios in my head, but I just, I want to know what your rationale, are we talking about, are we worried about people making off with, with the cultivated product on its way to the facility? Are we looking at, you know, theft? What are we looking at specifically that's the public safety concern?
Well, a lot of the issues that you just touched on, the other, the other thing that we looked at, and council sort of gave us this direction on, had to do with the model that was adopted by Lakewood, which is a vertical integration model. And that model does a couple of things. One, you know, it allows for us to have the grow operation and the cultivation operation located on the same site. If they're located on other sites, for instance, if they're doing, if they're, if the dispensary operation is here, but the grow operation's in Denver or Aurora, it makes it a lot more difficult for, for law enforcement to track that product. Now, the Department of Regulatory Authority may, is certainly looking at adopting some tracking mechanisms and some controls around that particular area, but we didn't have those particular protocols and regulations they were looking at at the time we were adopting this. So our concern was, was making sure that we could track the product and make sure that the medical marijuana that was sold wasn't associated with criminal enterprises, such as a drug cartel or organized crime. And it was also a way and a mechanism to, for us to look at controlling the size and the scope and the capacity of any given operation. And our concerns around that have to do with, you know, the environmental impact from large, large grows. There's certainly, in grow operations, there's a lot of electricity used, there's a lot of lighting used, so we had some building code concerns as it pertains to that, as well as hazardous material concerns. And there are certainly ongoing concerns about air quality, you know, that the universe, or Jewish National, Jewish Hospital is looking into, is looking into right now as it pertains to, you know, impacts on children and people, you know, humans in grow operations. So those were all sort of considerations we took in an effort to, you know, have some control over the scope and the capacity of these operations.
Okay. Now, in terms of, I understand the tracking thing, that makes a lot of sense. What about though, the concern, the public safety concern with having both cultivation and retail assets in the same location as it relates to, say, a criminal operation wanting to get their hands on a whole lot of this product, both in a cultivated state and a consumable state? Wouldn't we be essentially concentrating that opportunity for, for somebody who, say, they don't have the money for it, but they, they're determined to get their hands on it?
Well, that hasn't been, that hasn't been the case thus far, and I understand we're sort of, you know, on new ground right now, so things that we say today could certainly change a couple of years from now. But with the security requirements as it pertains to dispensaries and grow operations, and the requirements for alarming and the video surveillance, I don't have, although I'm concerned about that, I'm not as concerned, because, you know, the state statute has put in place some pretty specific regulations as it pertains to, you know, surveillance systems and how, how that product needs to be kept. So whether it's kept in one location or it's kept in separate locations, if you have somebody who has the desire and the will to commit a crime, they're going to commit it irrespective of whether it's all in one location or it's in two separate locations. It just depends on what, what they might be looking for.
Yeah, I'm not even thinking about it in terms of, say, a separate cultivation location and a retail location. I'm thinking about this more in the context of a residential location, a patient who's growing their own marijuana for their own use, or a primary caregiver who's growing it for a patient's use. Obviously, other, you know, neighbors, associates, whoever might know that marijuana's being cultivated at that location, but I'm wondering what your thoughts are in terms of, from a public safety standpoint, the advantages of that more sort of distributed, distributed residential-only cultivation, maybe for example, which the constitution guarantees, versus a retail, a commercial cultivation and retail mixed with that?
Let me see if I can try to answer your question. I think you're talking about, you know, the issue between, you know, a dispensary, and a dispensary can dispense to any patient who comes in with a valid medical marijuana card, versus a primary caregiver who, by the constitution, is limited to no more than five patients, six plants per patient or two ounces, unless there is some reason to have more than that based on a patient's particular need. One of the problems that we experienced with primary caregiver grows this past summer, as we evolve in this area, were a number of calls specific to just what you talked about. Burglaries, thefts, trespasses, neighborhood complaints in regards to grow operations that were going on in the backyards. And folks had valid, valid cards, they described themselves as caregivers, had the cards necessary for the number of plants that they had. And so really, you know, we respond, we investigate, we document, and that was the extent of it. Did take up some of our resources this past summer responding to a new and evolving, you know, field. One of the reasons that we, in this ordinance, want to restrict primary caregivers to indoor grows, and no more than 25 percent, is partly to deal with, you know, neighborhood and citizen complaints in regards to living in neighborhoods where medical marijuana operations were growing. And our efforts are very, very similar to, you know, an ordinance adopted recently in Aurora. A number of other communities are looking at restricting primary caregiver grows to indoor grows, so you don't have the thefts and some of the other, other events that you have around that. That, that looks distinctive, distinctly different than, you know, the dispensaries, because dispensaries, unless the state regulates the number of plants that a dispensary or grow operation can have, right now, that's, you know, dispensary is regulated to 70, a dispensary is required to grow 70 percent of their medical marijuana, and then they can purchase the remaining 30 percent from a licensed grow operation. So that's the state's effort to sort of control, control that. Now, the mechanisms in regards to how the, how the state is going to handle that, verify that, devils in the details on that as it pertains to those regulations, so.
Well, what I'm, what I'm more concerned about is just sort of the difference in terms of, from a public safety impact perspective, between, for example, allowing just indoor residential growing versus the proposed retail operation being allowed along with that indoor residential growing, which is, which is going to have the least amount of public, you know, safety impact, in your opinion?
In my opinion, they're both going to have a public safety impact. The laws as it pertains to dispensary and grow operations and the medically infused products piece, certainly the laws have been enacted to harden those facilities from the perspective of providing security there and lessening, efforts to lessen the opportunity for crime to occur there. Doesn't mean that we won't have crimes there. The primary caregiver, the residential grow, presents, presents an entirely different issue for us, and is one of the reasons that we want to look at this from the perspective, and Ken, I think I'm accurate on this, so correct me if I'm wrong. I'll try to talk over the vacuum cleaner. From, from the perspective of a primary caregiver, they'll have to obtain a license as well, so at least from a public safety perspective. And the city perspective will know where they're at, but from a security perspective, they don't have the requirements that a, you know, a business is going to have to have on them. And just based on some of the crimes that we've read about in the Denver metro area, I do have concerns as it pertains to home invasion robberies, burglaries. We had a number of calls for service this year involving juveniles who were jumping fences and cutting buds off of plants. So it's partly the reason that we've gone to this indoor grow model to try to address, address some of those, but it's such a new field, I'm really not in a position to say I, other than I know that we'll be responding to more calls for service related to this, you know, what exactly that impact is, is going to look like.
Well, and since one, since obviously residential cultivation is constitutionally protected, that's a, that's an issue you're going to have to deal with regardless of what happens with this ordinance. So it's good to get your, your perspective on kind of the difference between the retail and the homes, so.
Now, one of the things that we are talking about in the police department as, as we get through the adoption of this ordinance and this model is, is certainly trying to provide, just like we would with, with other businesses, some sort of crime prevention, tips or advice to primary caregivers. So at least they know some things that they can do to put in place at the residence so they're not victimized by that, but I think, I think the jury's still out on, on the total impact in that area.
Is, so the, the current model is that the dispensary has to grow 70 percent of their product that they sell?
That, that is what House Bill 1284 has, has in place, that a dispensary, medical-infused product, a business has to grow 70 percent. They're responsible for growing 70 percent of their product, and then they can purchase the remaining 30 percent from a licensed grow operation. So they wouldn't be able to purchase it from a primary caregiver, for instance, it would have to be from a licensed grow operation.
Are the two facilities operating in Wheat Ridge right now, growing, are they vertically integrated?
They're, they are not vertically integrated at this point, to my knowledge. I know with, with one of the dispensaries, they have made efforts to meet with city staff to talk about some, some questions they have as it pertains to the state's requirements as it pertains to grow operations. And I can't speak on behalf of the other dispensary right now.
I gather from the proliferation of shops you see in Denver that they're not vertically integrated.
Denver does not have a vertical, vertical integration model. Lakewood is, is one jurisdiction that, is a neighboring jurisdiction that has adopted that model. And that was modeled, some of our members of council were familiar with and thought would work for our community.
Okay. Anyone else?
Okay, I think that answers that. I do have a few of them. Under the vertical integration model, is it possible for Wheat Ridge grow operation actually to export some of their product to meet that 30 percent requirement in other jurisdictions?
If, if they have a, a grow license, it's my understanding, Dick, if they have a grow
license and they have a licensed dispensary that's licensed by the state, potentially they could.
They could.
I don't know if, if that's, if you're in agreement with that or not.
That's not our business model, and the state requirements are that all transactions take place.
Sir, if you, do you want to open it up to public comment, and if so, we want to get that on the mic?
Yeah, if you can bring that up under public comment, where, where you give your name and everything, yeah. So I, to the best of my knowledge, Dick, I think would have to research that and look, so. For people in residential areas that might have a greenhouse in their backyard, is that considered indoors?
Correct me if I'm wrong, but it can't be operated in an accessory building for any home occupation? Is that, is it, does someone have the code handy to look at that? We can get you a good answer on that. It's a good question.
And in the unlikely event that there are a line of people standing out in front of City Hall on the first day that application-
City Hall on the first day that applications can be submitted, how will the priority of processing be determined?
Yeah, thanks for that question, Dick. We, we've been thinking about that and, and we're not, you know, we don't know that we'll be inundated. We haven't had a lot of recent contact from businesses expressing a desire to, to be here, but that certainly doesn't mean that they, they couldn't be waiting to, to do that. You know, typically, we, we would process things in temporal order, so, I mean, if, if someone gets in, we process them in the order that they get in. We, we talked about billboards earlier tonight and, and when we, when we had that one vacancy, and this is several years ago, for the billboards, we did this lottery process, and I don't think that makes sense here. So I think we'd just be reviewing them as they, as they come in and to the extent that somebody gets in and as a result makes other locations, you know, no longer valid, then that would be the reality that we'd, they'd be faced with.
So they're going to be processed in chronological order of application?
Yep.
Okay.
Yep. And we're, we're discussing whether we want to kind of formalize what that process is going to look like and, and at, at a staff level, publish some sort of a, of a policy that makes that clear. So we're, we're viewing that.
Good. Thank you, Mr. Johnson.
Thank you.
Brendan.
Did you want an answer on the greenhouse? You, you actually would be able to grow in the greenhouse. The regulations for home occupations allow you to conduct the use indoors inside your home or inside an accessory structure?
Okay. I had one more question.
I just had a quick, quick question about the separation requirement between establishments. Is there such a requirement for liquor stores, just out of curiosity?
There is. It's a, it's a 500-foot separation requirement and I believe it's just from, I don't, we don't deal with that in, in my department, but I believe it's just from schools.
There's not a separation requirement between existing outlets, so you can have a liquor store next to a liquor store.
Okay.
The issue that, there is that it's a needs and desires hearing, so you have to petition the neighborhood and then the, the applicant has to come before the, the liquor authority and show that there is a need and desire for additional liquor in the neighborhood.
Yeah, and I can see how that's different from, from this particular case, okay.
There is a separation requirement for auto dealerships, isn't there?
I'm not aware of that, but.
That's in municipal code, yeah.
That's in the municipal code, okay. Okay. Well, thank you for excellent staff presentation and, and getting the questions answered. Now's the time for a public comment. If you can come forward and state your name and spell your last name for the record.
Good evening. My name's Chuck Wharton, W-H-A-R-T-O-N. This is my business partner Diana McKinley. We are one of the two dispensaries that are currently open in Wheat Ridge. Thank you very much. We, we love it here and it's been a very positive experience so far. You're asking about the transportation. One of the things that, that, I don't know if, if you've all had a chance to look at, but the, the Department of Revenue, in fact, just a couple of weeks ago, held their public hearings on the rules and regulations, some, I think there's 97 pages of rules and regulations which will be coming into effect in conjunction with House Bill 1284, which we're gearing up to and complying with, and they're, they're significant. They cover pretty much everything from seed to sale when it comes to medical marijuana and every single aspect of the business in between, including transportation, including security, including the 70-30 rule and how that's going to be enforced and monitored. They're putting into place plant identification to where we, we will be required to, to account for every portion of every plant that's ever started. You have to tag them, you have to report them, you can batch them, but you have to, you have to be able to tell the state what you did with every stem, root, leaf, and seed that came off of those plants. The vertical integration is also being encouraged, if not designed, by the Department of Revenue rules and regulations. And if, and if you look at, at the, the, the thought processes behind that, you'd see that if you were in the industry with us, it's a very desirable model to have for any number of reasons. And I'm not going to waste your time with what those reasons are, but just trust us where we believe that Wheat Ridge is going in the right direction by requiring the vertical integration. We welcome that as a matter of fact. Our goal, our desire is to not even go look for 30% anywhere else. We can provide 100% of everything our patients need. Because there are concerns and there are security risks. And it's not only from, from the public safety standpoint of, of theft and, and, you know, those types of things, it's a, it's a product quality question too. Those, those products that we grow, we know exactly what's gone into that product, if there's any, any kind of contaminants in that product, and it's something we simply just cannot tolerate and expect to be caregivers to our patients. The reason for dispensaries is a very simple one. There are a number of patients, many of which are citizens of this city, that don't have the ability or the wherewithal to grow for themselves but do have a need. And not just grow for themselves, but even make the products that they really need. We have a number of Vietnam veterans that are Agent Orange victims from, from Vietnam, and they have found that there are a, a, a very few products that really alleviate their pain, that really stimulate their, their appetite, and really give them enough comfort in order to be able to go to sleep each and every day. And, and, and they come to us and they, in fact, have, have sought us out exclusively because of the infused products that they can get from our dispensary. Anyway, that's where, you know, where we're coming with, from with that. As far as being able to grow on the same site as a dispensary, we, we recognize the concerns, but by the same token, you're doubling your risk by splitting those operations off and, and having to be in two places at once. It's kind of like providing an open flank for yourself and like the chief said, if somebody really wants to come get you, they're going to come get you. And I would, and I would frankly say that we have seen some, some news reports of some problems that they've had with dispensaries being robbed in the past year and stuff. It'd be a very simple statement on my part to say, you might want to take a look at how many times liquor stores get robbed and put those two things together and you'd find that, you know, those don't get dramatized on, on television the same way the medical marijuana centers do. And the frequency of that type of activity is almost nonexistent when you compare to the, to the attempts or the actual robberies of liquor stores. We hope that you will adopt the zoning ordinance as it's been presented to you. We think it's very fair. Our inspection of the city of Wheat Ridge would show that, and I'm sure you guys have a lot better maps than we were able to create with our little rulers and crayons, but you will find that by magic, there's only going to be a very few, limited number of places within the city of Wheat Ridge to be able to operate these types of businesses. And the other thing we would also say, would, would like to do is extend an invitation, come down and see us. We're on 38th and Kipling. We'd love to show you what, what's going on down there and alleviate any fears anyone has around this. Thank you.
Questions? I do have one question and I cheerfully will admit, it is probably outside the scope of, the planning commission has a rather limited scope on the actual land use, but on the transportation, that would seem to me that you would have to have the background checks and the security clearances basically in effect for everybody that was transporting the product. That, that is a cumbersome thing, isn't it?
Every single person associated with our dispensary is required to fill out a 25-page document and attach basically a truckload of documentation with it, items being all the way down to copies of college diplomas, four years' worth of tax returns, fingerprint cards, criminal background histories, all your bank account information. Put it this way, I didn't give, have to give the state of Colorado one-tenth the amount of information to become an attorney that we would in order to operate a medical marijuana dispenser, have anything to do with it. The rules and regulations also require that before any product is transported, it has to come into the dispensary, it's, it's, it's made into a secure form, tag, you then have to file a, a, basically a manifest and route plan with the, with the Department of Revenue, which tells them what routes you're going, where you're going, what time you expect to leave, what you're carrying, when you're going to get there, what route you expect to take. It's, it's enormously complex and full of detail. And, and because of that, if you're in the business and you're a small operation and you don't want to be, you know, the Walmart of marijuana, you're going to try to get away from transporting at all because it's so onerous to, to have to do it. We don't want to have to do that, so.
Okay. Thank you for indulging my curiosity. Are any other questions? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Are we ready for a motion?
I had one.
Any discussion?
I had one more quick question for, for staff. Ken, map number one, where you show the, indicate the three-quarter mile buffer between the existing dispensaries. This is, so we're showing the, the sort of light yellow or tan area that we're seeing there, that's a three-quarter mile radius for each of those circles, correct?
That's correct.
And are we, the, the proposed ordinance talks about having a three-quarter mile buffer just between each dispensary, not, or whatever the, the multiple of this would be, one and a half miles, correct? So if we were using this map as an example, you could theoretically put, say, another dispensary kind of in between the two and still maintain that three-quarter mile buffer?
Kind of in between the two.
Well, yeah. I mean, I, I can see, you know, where they allowed, if you pretended all of Wheat Ridge was zoned commercial one and there were no schools. I'm just, I'm just, I'm just, just from a, I'm a, I'm a visual, I'm a visual learner, so I just want to make sure I understand that, you know, the, the relationships here and sort of what's, what's possible for future, future expansion and future business development for this area.
The bottom line is there aren't going to be very many of them.
I, I understand that. I understand that. Okay, thanks, Ken.
Discussion?
It appears that both of these facilities that are listed would no, no longer be allowed in the ordinance as proposed.
Well, they'd be non-conforming.
It'd be legal non-conforming.
They'd be legal non-conforming.
Okay. Any other discussion, Scott?
It sounds like that the planning staff has made recommendations that the medical marijuana establishments would be allowed in commercial and industrial zone districts, which I guess the liquor stores and pharmacies also fall under. And it, it sounds pretty clear too that the grow operations are somewhat unsafe as Chief Brennan testified and that, I guess, you know, I guess I, I would also question our, if the grow operations are, are unsafe, are the indoor grow operations safe or unsafe in a residential neighborhood?
Any other discussion?
Sure.
Alan?
Well, I think, I think the proposed ordinance with regards to mandating indoor grow operations within residences is an extremely good idea for some obvious reasons in terms of crime prevention and public safety. I would be interested in hearing what people think about, in addition to making indoor, anyone who has an indoor operation conform to home business use requirements, mandating less than 25% maximum coverage within the residence. If, if there's any desire maybe to specify that homes that are locations for growing have a, things like, oh, you know, a working bathroom and a usable kitchen and other things that are typical of a house to avoid any sort of capitalization of a residence to be used as a commercial operation. You know, obviously since it's not zoned for it, it would be illegal, but I don't know.
Is that from the regulations from the California city that you referenced?
Yes.
The commission?
Yeah. I read that and it seemed like, it seemed sensible. Now, they, they might, they might have been coming from another place, they might have had a lot of issues with entire houses basically being used as grow houses and falling into disrepair and being structurally unsafe because of the, the growing concerns. I don't know if that's something we need to address or if the 25% is going to cover it.
I, I think the 25% covers it and I think in, the ones in, in California, they had to have a working kitchen, they had to have a working bathroom, they had to have a place to sleep, and they had to have the things that, that real houses have. The 25%, do you think that that would adequately cover those concerns?
I, I think it's a, it's a good comment and I think we, we have a series of other regulations that are in place that would allow us to require that they have as the principal use of the property as, as a residence.
Yeah, I mean, I don't want to like over-regulate it.
Right.
But it's just in terms of, you know, a concern about, you know, just addressing the same sort of.
Yeah, and I, I just think it's important to be consistent, you know, because we don't regulate anything else that way. And, and so I think it's important for us to be consistent and if we, if it turns out that that is a problem, you know, then that's something that we can address down the road, basically in the same way that California did, I think. But I, I think at least to begin, we should take the assumption that we should be consistent with the way we regulate other, other businesses. That's just, that's my thought.
My, my, just, my only other concern has specifically to do with that, just making sure that that thousand-foot buffer that's being proposed does include buffers from other municipalities, schools, childcare and treatment facilities. I just want to make sure that's, it, it sounds like it's written that way, but that's the only other concern I have.
Because actually, we don't have to conform to the, to that state 1,000 for other municipalities. Is that, that correct?
Well, there is of course a state licensing requirement as well, so they'll be reviewing it presumably without an eye towards municipal boundaries, but based on our attorney's review of the, the current language, we too have the obligation and responsibility of looking outside our boundaries.
Okay, that's, that was my reading too.
Any other discussion of that? I, I, oh, Scott?
I think, I would, I would be, I'm definitely in favor of having it in the commercial industrial, but I am definitely opposed to having it in any residential zone district.
John? You're going to refrain? I will just make the comment that I think staff and chief have done a excellent job of drafting these regulations and that's confirmed by one of the actual businesses in Wheat Ridge coming forward to say that that is regulations that they can live with. So I will be supporting this if someone will make a motion.
I move to recommend approval of an ordinance amending Article I move to recommend approval of an ordinance amending Article 11 of the Wheat Ridge Code of Laws by adding a new Article 12 concerning medical marijuana as it relates to chapter 20, to specific amendments to Chapter 26 of the code for the following reasons. The ordinance provides a reasonable approach to managing medical marijuana establishments consistent with the Colorado Constitution and applicable state laws. Two, the ordinance allows these establishments to be located in a limited range appropriate of appropriate commercial industrial zoning districts. And three, the ordinance limits the potential impacts from these establishments in residential areas by subjecting them to existing home occupation regulations.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded. Please pull the commission.
Can that motion be passed?
Okay. Thank you for participating tonight. Commission, do we want to take a short break before we go to the next one, or do you want to go straight through?
I'd like to move for a break.
I'll second that. I'd like to.
Pull the commission. A 10-minute break, be back at 8:20.
So the manual that's before you tonight would replace the existing Streetscape and Architectural Design Manual, which was adopted in 2001. Since that time, half of that document has essentially been made obsolete by the Architectural and Site Design Manual that was adopted in 2007. It contains architectural design guidelines that essentially replace the architectural design guidelines that were in this original 2001 document. We have been utilizing the Streetscape guidelines in that document. However, it's been a manual that's been very difficult to enforce. And that's for a few reasons. Excuse the technical difficulties there. It lacks objective measurements in terms of defining a minimum sidewalk width, a minimum width for the amenity zone between the sidewalk and the roadway. It also is not clear on what amenities, such as pedestrian lighting or benches, are required and at what spacing. It also contains outdated street typologies, dividing the city into rural and urban street sections that are not compatible with the typologies that we talked about in our Conference of Plan and in the recently adopted Pedestrian Bicycle Master Plan. So that was a summary of the main reasons why staff initiated last year the process of trying to come up with a new Streetscape Design Manual. One is just to clarify for people going through the development process, we will now have two separate manuals. One is the existing Architectural and Site Design Manual, and that will contain regulations for architectural and site design. And then we'll have the additional Streetscape Design Manual, which addresses just Streetscape design. The intent also is to create something that'll be much more, that'll be easier for staff to enforce and for the development community as they're proposing new development to understand what Streetscape requirements will be necessary for their proposed development. So that would include establishing more objective minimum widths and sidewalks, and on priority corridors, establishing pretty clear minimum requirements in terms of pedestrian lighting and other amenities, and also just establishing an overall design vision for those corridors so that as there's development on them, we can start seeing some quantifiable Streetscape The proposed manual does not apply to local residential streets, but it would apply to any collector or arterial within the city, as well as a new local street that might be part of a mixed-use or commercial development. If you're on a collector or an arterial, then the manual would apply if you're doing any new development or redeveloping or adding on to an existing building in a way that would increase that building by 50 percent or more in floor area. These requirements would also apply. We did a city-funded street improvement project, so we actually had capital dollars or bond initiative where we were going to go into a corridor and kind of do a comprehensive Streetscape design or improvement to the roadway, then the new design would need to meet the requirements in the manual. And this map depicts the six priority corridors, which we partially developed with input from Planning Commission in previous study session, and also took to correspond with those corridors that are identified in our comp plan in Vision Wheat Ridge as priority redevelopment areas. Most of them are identified as either commercial or mixed-use or neighborhood mixed-use corridors. And they do include Wadsworth and 38th Avenue, most of 44th Avenue, Kipling, Youngfield, and then the future TOD area around the Ward Road commuter rail station in the northwest subarea portion of the city. So for each of those priority corridors, we have a chapter that deals specifically with establishing a design intent for each corridor, some such as West 38th Avenue having a more pedestrian focus, others such as a Youngfield kind of recognizing why we want to provide for pedestrians and have comfortable pedestrian environment, they're more of an auto-oriented commercial boulevard. So for each priority corridor, there are, there's a minimum sidewalk widths, as well as minimum widths for a public amenity zone between the sidewalk and the street, specific requirements for pedestrian lighting and tree spacing, as well as provisions for where any kind of seating benches are required. And for most of our existing streets, in order to meet the requirements that are in this manual, because we do have so many streets that either don't have a sidewalk or have a sidewalk that is very narrow or, and/or do not have a buffer between the sidewalk and the roadway, in order to implement these adopted sections, or proposed sections, I should say, additional right-of-way would be required. So as development occurs, we would essentially either take an easement or additional right-of-way in order to meet the Streetscape design. And then there are more general design standards and guidelines in the rare instances when we would have redevelopment along an existing corridor that's not actually identified as a priority corridor. There are still minimum standards for sidewalk widths and buffer in amenity zones, and then lots of guidelines, more so than standards, but also some standards that relate to, for any street in the city, how you would have put in proper concrete and finishes on sidewalk, what street trees are acceptable and expectations so that they can be healthy. And then we also have a section at the end of the Streetscape Design Manual pertaining to maintenance and irrigation requirements. And just to refresh you all on the process that we've gone through, we've had two study sessions with this body, Planning Commission, before, in 2010. And the first was after we gave a first draft, that we got some great feedback from the Planning Commission was lacking in terms of, especially on priority corridors, having some real enforceable standards. So we spent some time developing those and then came back with another draft and had a study session on that in November. We've also had two study sessions with City Council. One was at the very beginning of the process, just to kind of get their go-ahead on moving forward with a new manual, and then we met with them in January to fill them in on all the progress that we had made with, particularly based on your input over the past few months. We did actually get some feedback from the Live Well Wheat Ridge Active Community Environment Task Force, or the ACE Task Force. They're a group that's really concerned with promoting multimodal and pedestrian-friendly design in the city, and so they gave us some great feedback on the initial draft. And part of why we're recommending approval of the new manual is that it does fit with language in our adopted comprehensive plan. The In Vision Wheat Ridge does specifically state as a goal that the city will work to enhance the image of our corridors. enhance the image of our corridors, including working with private developers and kind of clarifying what would be required of them, so that we can have more attractive Streetscape throughout the city. And as I've mentioned already, we think it's just an important step to kind of clarifying what the rules are for new development, because right now it's a little confusing with the two different manuals and the existing Streetscape Design Manual lacking the objective standards. And the final thing I would point out is just that the ordinance that's before you tonight does include several code changes, and most of, some of that is just establishing and basically authorizing this document, adopting it, but most of the other code changes in there are really cleanup and kind of removing references to the old manual that would no longer be in place, and replacing them with references to this new manual. And I'm happy to answer any questions. I have my copy of the manual back at my desk, so I'm, is it okay if I go back over there?
Scott?
I have three questions. The first question is on, on the manual, on page 28, the, and I apologize, I haven't been involved up until now on the Streetscape Design Manual, so this is kind of all new to me. But on page 28, it's, the tree grate statement says, "Tree grate openings should be no more than a quarter inch in width." Currently, the ADA max slot size is a half inch. Could we remove the quarter-inch slot size or in place with, shall comply with ADA regulations? Really just so that we don't limit the manufacturers and the choice of tree grates?
Yeah, I think that that's a reasonable amendment.
And then my, my next question is, on page 36, on the irrigation, would you either consider adding or rewriting A to read, "Drip irrigation is to be used in all non-turf areas consisting of either emitter, subsurface, or microspray"?
I'm sorry, you're saying to amend to require drip irrigation?
Just to state that drip irrigation is, is to be used in all non-turf areas consisting of either emitter, subsurface, or microspray.
Yeah, we can definitely at least consider it. Most of the language on the irrigation requirements we developed with input from our Parks and Rec staff, who actually have existing irrigation systems for streetscaping. So I would just want to double-check with them before I commit to any changes. We'll definitely consider that.
And then, and then my last question is, would you consider adding a statement that says, "Turf areas less than six foot in width shall be irrigated with subsurface to avoid overspray and pavement"? I know that, as an irrigation designer, that typically the nozzles, the smallest nozzle's about six feet, and when you start nozzling it down, you're going to have a lot of overspray onto areas.
Again, definitely would consider, I just want to double-check with our Parks and Rec staff.
Overall, I think the Streetscape Design Manual is, is really well thought and put together. Thank you.
Thank you.
John?
The area on 44th Avenue between Harland and Ammons, how are we proposing to tackle that? Because isn't at least one side of the street Lakeside through that area?
Yeah.
You're only going to work on streetscaping one side?
Well, we've, our Public Works Department did a Streetscape Improvement Project along Harland already, so, and we would, for our side of the street, would continue that, you know, all the way north up to the edge of the city if there was new development, or, I'm actually not even familiar with exactly how far it already goes. But we, essentially, we would only have jurisdiction over our side of the street. Yeah.
I guess I would, I sort of question the, it's not the need, that area clearly needs streetscaping, it's, it's not aesthetically pleasing. But having that as a priority, given that we're only able to control half of it, I'm not sure, it, it sounds to me like a great idea to be spending money on streetscaping one side of the 44th, when the other side of 44th, we have no control over, and Lakeside, let's be frank, is not going to Streetscape that.
Sure. Well, just to clarify, the document is not in any way state, committing the city to, to do any of the streetscaping, and I, I, I think that's certainly something we can consider and talk to Public Works about. Essentially, though, my understanding is, especially for 44th, unlike 38th Avenue, for example, where we've already made some city investments and might look at continuing the streetscaping on 38th with public dollars, that on 44th, these standards are more in place so that if somebody came in and was going to do a private redevelopment, it would be at their cost to add a sidewalk where we might not have one, or at least make a wider sidewalk and meet these standards.
Okay, great, thanks.
I've got just one quick question to promote the domestic tranquility in the Matthews household. On page 47, it shows the service barriers as highest water use. And on page 51, it shows the service barriers as low water use. Which is it? And do I have to apologize to my wife?
I can answer the second one for you.
The, so this first list, where it's listed first, is from a list that we took from the Garden Centers of Colorado, so they provided that water rating. And when they appear the second time, that was given to me by our, a woman in our Parks and Recs Division who's been really helpful, has a lot of familiarity with trees. So I will have to do some research to find out which categorization is correct.
But it wouldn't hurt to apologize anyhow.
Yeah, I guess.
Are we ready for a motion, or do we want discussion?
Oh, John, I just wanted to clarify, I think in regards to the, the Harland, or the 44th Avenue corridor you're talking about, I think the only part of that that's actually in Lakeside is the northeast corner of that intersection of 44th and Harland. The rest of it, all of, all of 44th rate there sits in Wheat Ridge.
I think I, I wonder if I read the map wrong. I thought I-
Were you thinking, were you thinking it was Harland?
No, no, I thought it was 44th between, basically Sheridan to Harland.
No, it's from Harland.
But it's Harland to Wadsworth.
Less of there, yeah.
Yeah, and that's, for some reason, I thought you were talking about Harland.
Yeah.
And the fact that we-
It was actually 44th.
Yeah, which you're right, there's only a very small portion of it that we don't have both sides.
Any other discussion before we have a motion? Motion?
Are you going to add any amendments to it, Commissioner Ohm?
I think the only, my only real concern for adding the amendment would be the tree grate amendment of, that sounds like we're in agreement on for sure, of taking the quarter-inch slot size, removing that, and replacing with, shall comply with ADA regulations.
Okay, I, I can go ahead and, and take a shot at the, at the motion then.
Good.
I shouldn't be doing this, though. I move to recommend approval of the proposed ordinance amending Chapter 26 pertaining to adoption of the Streetscape Design Manual with the following addition. Strike Sub A under Tree Grates on page 28, and replace with, "Tree grates should comply with current ADA guidelines."
Is that okay?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Please pull the commission.
And that motion passes unanimously.
Okay, thank you. We are ready to move to the next one. I hereby open the public hearing for case number ZOA-11-01, and ordinance amending Chapter 26 concerning residential dumpster regulations. Ask for the staff presentation.
Good evening. My name is Lauren Mikulak, I'm a Planner 1 with the Community Development Department, and I'm giving the staff report tonight for case ZOA-11-01 concerning residential dumpster regulations. I would like to enter into the record the case file, draft ordinance, and the contents of this digital presentation. I'd also like to document that the public noticing requirements have been met for this hearing, so we do have jurisdiction to hear it. This case proposes a small amendment to Section 614 of the zoning code, which provides for the size, screening, and placement of trash receptacles in various zone districts. Currently, the zoning code allows residential properties with one and two family dwellings to have one trash dumpster no larger than one and a half cubic yards. Tonight's code amendment is a follow-up to amendments that were approved in 2009. Some of you may have been part of that process. Those amendments in 2009 were in response to a series of code violations and non-compliant dumpsters. At that time, policy discussion did take place through a series of study sessions with both the Planning Commission and City Council. The one and a half cubic yard size restriction for residential dumpsters was established as a part of the 2009 approval of that case, ZOA-09-04. And since that time, we've had at least one property owner that has received a code violation, and as a result, staff was asked to review the size restriction. The intent of tonight's proposed amendment is to provide a more viable option for property owners by amending the maximum residential dumpster size to two cubic yards, to more accurately reflect industry standards and availability. Staff surveyed the metro area refuse providers, and we've confirmed that the local industry standard and availability of a small dumpster is two cubic yards. The four providers that I've listed in this table is an abbreviated version of the table that was included in the staff report. These four providers all serve the Denver metro region, including Wheat Ridge, and these four providers are also included on the city's online resource directory. There's about 15 companies under the recycling and garbage category, and these are the only four who do provide dumpster service. The top company, EDS Waste Solutions, does offer one and a half cubic yard, but the sales rep did confirm that they have a very limited supply of that size, and more commonly give folks two cubic yards, I think without them even knowing it. It did include the image that was in the staff report, I think it's sometimes hard to visualize what two cubic yards, one and a half cubic yards look like. So I've included that here. And as I've stated, staff does recommend amending the code to allow for a two-cubic-yard dumpster for one and two family dwellings in residential zone districts. For consistency, we'd also recommend amending the language pertaining to residential, residential structures in agriculturally-zoned property. Those properties are allowed to have larger dumpsters, so we would amend that language to say maybe larger than two cubic yards. And I want to emphasize that these changes do not affect any of the screening or placement regulations that currently exist. So residential dumpsters would still require screening from adjacent property, public right-of-way, and they would continue to be restricted from the front setback. Again, this, this amendment is, provides a more viable option for property owners, and we think it may cut down on code enforcement issues, and it more accurately reflects current industry standards, which was the intent of the 2009 code amendment. And with that, I would be happy to answer any questions.
John?
I actually do have one, I feel bad about it, but-
That's okay.
On the second change to the agriculturally-zoned properties, is there a reason why we want to go from one and a half to two on that one? Since one and a half is actually still an option.
It is an option.
We are, in fact, cutting out the use of, of one and a half when it's still a viable option, and we're allowing anything bigger than one and a half. Is there a reason we really want to do that?
I think we were just thinking the fewer numbers to confuse people, so if they're the same and consistent, for clarity.
Okay.
Any other questions, comments for staff? I do have one, not a question, but a comment, that I really liked the presentation where you show the changes, and actually, as near as I can tell, it's 10 words coming out and four words going in, so it is a relatively small change. Are we, comments?
I just have one brief comment. I, I can kind of see the point of changing it to two, so that it kind of prevents from salt sourcing, one specific, you know, waste, you know, like this EDS Waste Solutions, so that's it.
Does anyone want to make a motion? Or, do you have a comment, Alan?
I'll make the motion, though. I move to recommend approval of the proposed ordinance amending Section 614 of Chapter 26 concerning residential dumpster regulations with the following amendment. Regarding residential structures on agriculturally-zoned property, we do not change the language regarding one and one-half cubic yard dumpsters, but instead allow that one and one-half to remain there, since they are still available.
Is there a second?
I'll second it, because I brought it up.
Okay, is there any additional discussion of that? Please pull the commission.
I think I was a little late in turning on the field.
John, you didn't, you didn't vote.
Okay, that motion passes unanimously.
Okay, thank you. I think that concludes that, and that brings us to the other items on the agenda. And I had planned on having one of our two representatives, Steve Tims or Ann Brinkman, give a little presentation on the 38th Avenue corridor plan.
Let me know that works out for you.
Is there anyone that feels comfortable in giving a brief update on that?
Well, they probably wouldn't have too much data at this point, because we haven't had our first stakeholder, we haven't had any official meetings yet. So our first stakeholder committee meeting is going to be on March 10th, and that's the group of about 25. We do have a list of those members on our website, the 38th Avenue Plan website on the Community Development page. It's composed of property owners, residents that live close to the corridor, and business owners on the corridor. And shortly thereafter, on March 15th, we will have the first public meeting, which is going to be held at Wheat Ridge Middle School at 6:30. And the, that first meeting will really focus on visioning, and kind of just thinking pretty broad about, you know, getting input from the community on what they want 38th to be moving forward. As opposed to the second public meeting, which we'll be having in May, most likely, where we'll get into a little more nitty-gritty, looking at the potential of removing a traffic lane in each direction, and talking some more about the specific design of the street.
Thank you. Anything more? Or, no, okay. How about the Wheat Ridge Retail Road Show?
You should have received the notice sometime last week about an upcoming event that-
about an upcoming event that.
Is your mic on?
It is. I'm not speaking into it, maybe. We have the International Council of Shopping Centers, which is a retail trade group with a national and international presence. And really, they have a subcommittee that is called the Alliance Subcommittee, and it's kind of the confluence of the public sector and the private sector. And that group is bringing a panel of experts to Wheat Ridge. And it's intended to be the first in a series of these meetings where, hence the road show, where they come out to communities in the Denver metro area and other parts of Colorado, perhaps, and kind of give you their assessment from a retailer's and a developer's perspective on what the, you know, opportunities and constraints are, what the realities are in the retail market right now, whether it be national trends or how they see those national trends playing out at a local level in the Denver metro area and hopefully really specifically for a city like Wheat Ridge. So we're real excited about it. I mean, hopefully, it's a real good learning opportunity for you all, and it'll be here next Wednesday. So at, I want to say 6. Have to double-check that time. It's either 5:30 or 6:00 that starts. So it's scheduled for about an hour and a half, and I think it's a panel of four public and private sector representatives.
Any additional items to come before the commission for the other commissioners? Is there a motion to adjourn?
You can dominate the session for another. I would make my last motion as a member of the Planning Commission to adjourn this meeting. Second?
Pull the commission?
I never wanted to end.
It's been a pleasure working with all of you guys. And I like the direction that everything's going here in Wheat Ridge. And I mean, I am too.
We're going to miss that.
Actually, very much.